Good evening. Thank you all for attending this evening's city council meeting of August 5th, 2021. Roll call.
Mr. Gaddy. Mr. Basaki?
Here.
Mr. Palumbo. Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gurke?
Present. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any comments on agenda items only? Yes, Chief.
Just a couple of things. You'll notice that there are a couple of resolutions this evening related to the police department. One of those resolutions is a Teamster agreement between the city and Officer Matthew Painter. Officer Painter has taken a position with another police department closer to his home. He's worked with the Uniontown Police Department for almost 12 years at this point, and he spent the last few years working with his canine partner, Kilo.
And he- Chief, can I interrupt you for a minute, please? I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'll get back to you in a few minutes. Over the last month, you had contacted my office and council about Officer Painter leaving our department and taking another job closer to his home. You also noted that Officer Painter was interested in purchasing Kilo and, you know, take him with him.
Yes, sir.
And you had done a cost analysis over what that would cost the city. And I appreciate you looking out for the city. But I got a chance to meet with Officer Painter today, and I could see that the bonding that Officer Painter has with Kilo and himself is undeniable. There's no question. And again, Chief went over a cost analysis of how much it would cost Officer Painter to purchase Kilo from the city and take him along with him. But in good conscience, I just can't see having Officer Painter pay for a friend. It was his friend, and he took care of him for the last three years or whatever it was. I would like to make a resolution today or get it on the agenda that make a motion that we would offer Kilo to Officer Painter and take him along with him at no cost to Officer Painter. I mean, we just get- how do we go about doing that, Tim?
Absolutely. So, once we get to the regular agenda, that can be added as just an initial item that then can be voted on and then added with a resolution number at that point.
Ms. Marshall, would you be able to get that on there at the appropriate time? I'm sorry to interrupt you, Chief.
No problem at all.
And I'm sorry to, you know, I know we had talked about how much it would cost the city, but like I said before, I just can't see putting a price tag on a family member. And he spent more time with Kilo than he had with his own family for the past few years.
The police department appreciates that, and I'm sure Officer Painter will greatly appreciate that as well.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, Chief. But carry on.
No problem at all.
Thank you very much.
You'll also see a resolution to hire new officers. As council is aware, Officer James Sabo left the Uniontown City Police Department, I believe it was in February. And we, Captain Rutter, has worked with the Civil Service Commission to go through the testing process to establish a certified list for the police department. And this evening, we have Arnold Farmer in the audience, who is number one on our list to be hired, and we would greatly appreciate your support on that resolution. And the third resolution is to conduct a new test for a pool of applicants so that we have a pool of applicants should others leave or retire. As we know, Officer Painter is now within the next month going to be transitioning out of our department. So I appreciate your support on those. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any other comments on agenda items only? If not, the monthly report of the treasurer. I do see that we have a report that was dropped off by Ms. Hodge. So there's no one here to give a report for the treasurer's office today?
I just read the resolutions.
Okay. And that's all I have, Ms. Marshall.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the report of the treasurer as presented for the month of July 2021. Be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Basaki?
No.
Mr. Shuhon?
No.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the minutes of the July 1st, 2021, regular council meeting. Be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown, council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the city of Uniontown for July 2021 invoices. In the general fund, eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and six cents. Sewer fund, one hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Recreation, three thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Highway, three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Recycling, three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. Library fund, thirty thousand. Off-street, twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and one cent. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to approve a refund payment for the following landlord registration fee to each. William DeShield, fifty dollars. Mike O'Embarbrose, Drew Har, twenty-five dollars. Mr. DeShield's property is in North Union. Drew Har's property is South Union. Robin Beer, twenty-five dollars, South Union. John Ricker, paid for the same property twice. The State of Thomas Stewart, Melissa and Gerald Drummond, fifty dollars, North Union. Teresa Murato, overpaid, twenty-five dollars. Matthew Mahalovich, twenty-five dollars, North Union. John Rutter, twenty-five, paid for commercial property. Laura Hollins Investment, twenty-five, North Union. Nick Stan, twenty-five dollars, paid for commercial property. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to approve a payment for the following sewage customer. This property was sold, and the closing attorney paid an extra month's sewage charges, and the seller was charged the amount to John Pinella for a total refund of thirty-three dollars. Mr. Shuhon?
Sewage refund, yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize waiving one half of sewage bill for Thomas Jazbek in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and seventy-seven cents for property he owns for account number 684759104. He is offered to pay the other half of the remaining bill that he still thinks he paid, and the sewage office does not have documentation of it being paid. Mr. Basaki?
No.
Mr. Shuhon?
No.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to enter into a memorandum of agreement between chauffeurs, Teamsters, and helpers local union number 491 and police officer Matthew Painter and the city of Uniontown as presented. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to certify the results of the city of Uniontown firefighter's civil service exam. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to certify the results of the city of Uniontown police civil service exam and to authorize the city clerk to advertise for a new exam. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to hire Arnold V. Farmer Jr. as patrolman for the city of Uniontown Police Department with a six-month probationary period, starting salary as indicated by contract at twenty-three sixty-one per hour, with a start date of Monday, August 9th, 2021, pending successful completion of a medical and psychological exam. Mr. Basaki?
Absolutely.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Absolutely.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to swear our new patrolman in. Sir, do you want to come to the podium? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am Arnold V. Farmer Jr.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the Commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of patrolman with fidelity.
I do.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate, nor am I knowingly a member of any organization that advocates, to overthrow the government of the United States or of this Commonwealth by force or violence or other unconstitutional means, or speaking by force or violence, deny other persons their rights under the Constitution of the United States or of this Commonwealth.
I do.
And I do further swear or affirm that I will not so advocate, nor will I knowingly become a member of such organization during the period that I am an employee of the city of Uniontown, Pennsylvania.
I do.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
(Applause).
When I'm working.
(Inaudible).
I skipped Resolution Number 145 and dispatched the resolution I'll read now. Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to ratify approval of an additional fifteen thousand dollars for accounting services to Cypher and Cypher. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to approve hiring Anthony Jones for a part-time position up to 29 hours per week in the sanitary sewer department at an hourly rate of ten dollars per hour to be effective August 9th, 2021.
Can I say something about that, please?
Sure.
We're really shorthanded in this sewage department, Streets Department. We're just, we're really shorthanded. So, we need this. Johnny's been backed up, and there's a lot of things we need to get accomplished, especially before the winter time hits. So, it's needed.
And Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for a part-time parking enforcement officer for the city of Uniontown. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of a manual asphalt stamper for the Streets Department at a cost of two thousand dollars. Mr. Basaki?
Yes. This is a piece of equipment we need as well. Everything we have is wearing out, and just by law, we are supposed to tam these spots, so we need it.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of a sign with the name Dicey Simon for the softball field at Bailey Park for a price of one thousand dollars. Mr. Shuhon?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Basaki?
He was a great man.
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to make the following reappointments to the Uniontown Public Library Board of Directors. Christopher Klass term to expire August 15th, 2024. Vincent Winfrey term to expire August 15th, 2024. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize a city-sponsored Halloween event in the city of Uniontown for October 29th, 2021. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the city of Uniontown to co-sponsor a September 11th, 20 years later event with the county of Fayette. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the Director of Community Development to apply for Fayette County Redevelopment Authority DBBG funds for comprehensive plan costs. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the Director of Community Development to submit the DCD 2022 Community Development Law grant application. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
And there, that's all I have.
Thank you. Monthly reports. Code Officer, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening. First, I guess we'll touch on cleanup day. Had a fairly successful cleanup day in as much as, I think, we had 10 or 12 pickup truck loads of stuff collected, and the better part of an entire garbage truck, even after it was compacted, filled up. County Halling had their guys out in the alleys at 5:00 AM with the garbage truck. So that was a huge, huge help to the people that were out collecting. I mean, that's just huge, being able to have that truck right there, throw the stuff in it, and go down the alley, you know, another 50 feet, 100 feet, have the truck right there. So, you know, a lot of our success, I guess, wasn't part of County Halling.
Mr. Thomas, can I interject?
Sure, yeah.
Just quickly, I had spoke with the people from County Halling, and that was on a volunteer basis that they came.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The three gentlemen that showed up from County Halling volunteered their time to get up- if they were here at 5:00, they had to probably been at work by 4:00. So, you know. On the volunteer end, it was mostly city employees and Reverend Winfrey. We all can't do it alone. I appreciate the help that we had. I appreciate the past help we had, and I realize everybody can't come every time. And I know, I don't think anybody expects anyone to show up for every cleanup day. But we need to see maybe some new faces moving forward. But it was successful. Like I said, we had 10 or 12 pickup trucks, full pickup truck loads, plus the better part of an entire garbage truck compacted full. So I think that's a success. In my conversations with the guys from County Halling, came up the need for garbage cans. I won't deny it. I've probably, under my breath, cussed those people more times than not. But they can only work with what you got. Friend of mine sometimes says you can't make ice cream out of horse manure, and you can't. If people don't bag their garbage, it's going to be all over the street when they pick it up. If you use recycling cans for your garbage, number one, and I didn't even realize this, that's a finable offense to County Halling. If the DEP guy's out and wants to make a big deal out of it, he can fine them $20,000 for emptying a recycling container into a garbage truck. Might be garbage in that recycling container, but the container is clearly labeled recycling. So we need to get residents to quit using recycling containers for garbage cans, and also, they go down the alley, and they don't know what's in there. Is it recycling or is it garbage? They, I mean, they can't divine, as they're driving down the alley, what's in there. So it takes extra time to stop, oh, there's really recycling in here. They go 50 more feet, oh, there's garbage in this one. They go 50 more feet, oh, this one has recycling. So, yeah, we need to quit using recycling containers for garbage containers. And everybody has to get a garbage can. That is a city ordinance. I've started writing sweep tickets again, and I could give everybody a sweep ticket who's not using a garbage can, and we're going to get to that point if people don't get with the program. Got a call today about rats. Why do we have rats? We have rats because you have garbage all over the place. Rats aren't going to live where there's nothing to eat. It's just, again, it's just common sense, simple logic. So, we need to get garbage cans, and we need to get garbage into ready containers. If I had it my way, we would give everybody a garbage can and just add 15, $20 of their garbage bill every month till the cans were all paid for. But I don't get to run, it's not my show. But we all need to get garbage cans. Needles, those guys had pictures of needles sticking out of bags. I don't know anybody that wants to pick up a bag with needles sticking out of it. So, you know, that's what, kind of what they're dealing with. If we, maybe we're a little more diligent on our end as citizens, it might make their job a little easier, and maybe I wouldn't cuss them under my breath. But they do a good job, even though maybe we don't always give them credit for it. Month of July, I had 14 new cases logged in. I started the month with 70. I closed 21 cases, which gave me 49 cases running into August, but I have 24, 25, 26 cases on my windowsill that I haven't even logged in. Those are complaints. Somebody calls me. While I'm on the phone, I just print it off, computer, the property address, put it right in line with the rest. I close a couple, I take a couple off the shelf. So if you add those 20-something into the 49 I'm carrying, I'm still got 70-some problems in the city that need addressed. I'm not crying, I'm not complaining, I'm just explaining the whole situation. I don't know who's, you know, what citizens are watching this or who cares, but I'm only one person. If you only had one fireman, if Buck was the only fireman, the whole town would burn down the first time there was a fire. Luckily, we have a bunch of guys that show up and put out a fire. If there was only one police officer, it'd be crime all over the place. Luckily, we have a good bunch of guys, police officers, that come to work and keep us safe. I'm the only code guy. So bear with me, I will get through it, I'll get to it. It's not that we don't care, I just, I'm one person. All right, I'm going to shut up. Any questions? All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would you like me to make that motion now or at the end of the report?
Let's do it at the end of the report, is that okay? Very good. Fire Department, Buck, Joe.
This month's report is unavailable. Buck can give us an update on the Fire Department. I do want to thank Buck and Sergeant Kahn and his, the rest of the firefighters for taking care of our city. I will be able to give the report at our next meeting.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, it's my fault. I was helping Matt today, and by the time I got back to the station, I forgot all about it, so. It's been an average. We probably had 80 or 90 calls, so. We're getting ready for preventive maintenance that's due on all the apparatus, the oil changes and all that noise, pump test, and test the ladder, and all the other stuff we have to carry on with. So, I really don't have much else. Anybody have any questions, comments? Thanks, guys.
Very good. Thanks, Buck.
Thanks, Buck.
For all your hard work. Appreciate it. Police Department, Chief Cox?
Evening.
Evening.
During the month of July, the Uniontown Police Department responded to 821 calls for service. Breakdown of some of those calls included 13 vehicle accidents, 14 assaults, three burglaries, 12 criminal mischiefs, five disturbances, 41 domestics, eight drug offenses, nine fire calls, 26 harassments, 11 public intoxications, 15 disorderly conducts, 26 emergency medical assists, seven shots fired calls, six overdoses, 53 suspicious activities, seven suspicious persons, 20 thefts, and served 11 warrants. Officers made a total of 15 criminal arrests and issued 17 traffic citations. Officers also conducted numerous vehicle and foot patrols and bicycle patrols during, along the Sheepskin Trail and in areas within the city limits. Aside from the calls for service that we had this month, we had a fortunate month. It's great when the police department has the opportunity to interact with the community when they're not called there. And so, it's been a good summer to, for officers to go down to Grand Street Park on Tuesdays and Thursdays, watch some basketball games, hang out with guys and gals that are down there for basketball. Over the last month, myself and the mayor have had an opportunity to attend a couple of community events. The other night, we had National Night Out. We also participated in Hoops and Scoops, which was a success. Last Saturday, I got to ride around a pickup truck with Reverend Winfrey and pick up some garbage. So it's been a good month for the police department to have opportunities to interact with the community. So we've enjoyed that. Any questions? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate it. Director of Public Works, any report from the Public Works Department?
He's not here tonight.
Okay. We'll move on. Do you have anything to add to that, Steve?
We're shorthanded. We're trying to work on getting a lot of sewer drops clean, stormwater. Just you have to bear with us, please. We're just, like I said, very shorthanded. These guys are doing what you can do, and we still have a lot of upgrading and updating to do on a lot of the old lines. So it may not seem like we're making much progress, but we really are.
You're making progress on them streets downtown, so I just thought I should mention that, that all the black toppings and new servicing is a good job.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Steve. Next report is Community Development Coordinator, Mr. Mark John.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. And Councilman Basaki, to echo that, thank you to your workers. They are, every day, out there grinding, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'll pass on to them.
Please do, please do, as we always do when we see them. Council, thank you for approving resolutions 151, 153, 157, and additionally, 156 tonight. Economic development, we have been pursuing a lot of avenues in terms of attracting forward-thinking businesses to our community. We are generating more and more leads every day. Parks and Recreation, most specifically Bailey Park, we are working on many improvements at Bailey Park, lights being top priority and working to get these concrete bases in. I do want to mention that Bailey Park on August 28th, Community Day's event will be hosted, live music giveaways, food and drinks, activities for children, bounce houses, things of that nature, from 12 to 5 at Bailey Park. Comprehensive Plan, we are continuing to work with Gibson Thomas, and we do thank them for providing help in seeing this comprehensive plan through, even though they are not hired by pen and paper contract through resolution and a verbal agreement. They are going out of their way to help us. of their way to help us. With the Sheepskin Trail, we have gone to the next step, and the PUC has entered into a tentative order, which will allow us to obtain the right of way. There are still a ways to go, but we have certainly made progress.
That's huge, Mayor.
It is. Today was a big step in our progress, and thank you to all who helped. And that is pretty much it. If you guys have any questions... Oh, within the Sheepskin Trail, we do want to thank K2 Engineering, and Sue Sepick, and Dana Kendrick for their, they provided us with complete drawings, engineered drawings of the plans on behalf of the City of Union Town Redevelopment Authority, and the County Redevelopment Authority, and Andrew French in his office, and certainly K2 in their office. We thank you for providing us with those plans, as well as some additional plans that K2 had provided us for Bailey Park. So we are thankful. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your work. That was a huge hurdle to see.
Big step.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. John. Thanks for all your hard work, as always, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Director of Planning and Community Relations, Ms. Kutek?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few notes. I would like to thank everyone for their participation. Volunteers for the Union Town Birthday Fire Track for 5K, we had over a hundred and twenty participants. Great day for all who attended. We brought in over $12,000, spent seven. Nice profit there to use in future events. And Fayette County hosted the Get Moving Fayette Walks event in July. Was a look up in Union Town, which Mayor Gerke and others shared history of a few of the many historic buildings around the city. Mayor Gerke talked about the life of George C. Marshall and the Memorial Plaza. The next walk is scheduled for August 25th, and will begin and end at the Covered Bridge in Hutcheson Park. The series of walks are to encourage our community to get out, get active, and explore Fayette County. Flag presentation. This is near and dear to my heart. Overwhelming response from the public. We, everyone pitched in, donated $2,350 for those flags. With that being said, Silvestre Group and online stores presented a set of the Allied Nation flags to Mayor Gerke and Councilman Mr. Joe Shuhon and Mr. Steve Saki. I'd like to thank the George C. Marshall Ambettes Post 103, the Albert Gouten JR OTC, Rolling Thunder Chapter 5, Fayette County Commissioner Dave Lor for the invocation, Brian Benson, Director of Veterans Affairs of Fayette County, and the many veterans, families, and friends who all came together to raise those flags at Marshall Plaza. I'm currently working on replacing the three missing nameplates. And in my time, an hour spent down there getting this project underway, there are two nameplates missed. One is Pennsylvania, the other one is Luxembourg. So I would like to get those changed, as well as each of the twenty flagposts, one or both of the lighting, there's up and down lighting. So that's forty lights replaced. We're getting those updated. I would like to talk about, I would like to thank you for approving my upcoming events. September 11th Memorial Remembrance at Story Square at 2:00 p.m. Is our hope that young and old will join together at Story Square as one, as we remember that fateful day, the sacrifices made, and the patriotism that stirred our souls. More details will be forthcoming in the weeks ahead. My October 29th event doesn't have a name yet, but I can tell you it's going to be movies, costumes, ghosts, and goblins at the State Theater. What better place to be fit to have that? Stay tuned for more details. Veterans Appreciation, this is, again, a county event that I'm inviting the city August 21st, starts at 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Veterans Appreciation Day. This event is for everyone to attend. There'll be a Veterans Bike Rally, Car, Truck, and Motorcycle Show. WMBS will be broadcasting live. Food vendors for prizes and raffles. Fun for the entire family. Everyone is welcome. If anyone would like to help with any of these upcoming events, feel free to reach out to me anytime. Any questions?
I want to say, I want to say with that, it was an honor to be able to serve in that flag ceremony. It was very nice. Thank you for your commitment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kutek, and all your hard work. Ms. Marshall?
Mayor, yes, I'd like to make an announcement, too, because it was not on the agenda, that there was an executive session held today by mayor and council. It actually started at 3:30 for legal matters. And now, Mayor, if you'd like me to read the motion made by Mayor Gerke and seconded by Mr. Saki, to offer police doll kilo to Officer Painter at no cost to him.
As this wasn't on the agenda, we need to open up for public comment, if there is any public comments. It wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
Any public comment?
Mr. Saki?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
And Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
And now that's all.
Okay, very good. It's a time for public comment. Before we get to public comment, I hope everyone had a chance to read the rules and regulations that we have on our doors posted. A three-minute time limit is for each citizen to speak. That's to get everyone a chance to speak. So at this time, is there any public comment? And if there is, please state your name and make your way up to the podium. Yes, sir?
My name's Larry Hill. I have two items...
Excuse me, Mr. Hill. Would you state your address, too, please?
36 East Kerr Street. I've been a resident thirty-four years. I've got two items I want to address. One is, I'm going to bash county hauling a little bit, because I've been, ever since they've taken over, I have to argue and fight with them to get them to pick up the recycling. It's, they give us a paper telling us the date that they want us to put it out, and they never come in. Two times, they've come and got it when they were supposed to. One time, I had to call them three times, and they still didn't come pick it up. And I got mad and re-bagged it and put it in the garbage. They take the garbage regular, but they won't take the recycling regular. I don't know what the problem is. The other thing is, the issue with cats in the city, the dressers before, stray cats running around. I don't know what we can do about it, but we've got to do something, because every time I turn around, there's a cat having kittens in my yard. Right now, there's three running around in my yard. So we've got to do something about getting them fixed, or I don't know what we can do, but we've got to do something about it. It's getting, it's getting out of hand. And we're talking about people that don't have garbage cans. They put their garbage out in bags, and these cats tear them up. The next thing you know, the garbage is all over the place. And so, we've got to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Matt, we do have some, a contact person about the cats, don't we? Or we did at one point?
I can reach out. We have two different avenues. Well, actually, honestly, we have three. I sometimes can go get them. And then I have two no-kill agencies I work with. But it's a matter of one, I've got to track them. I can, and I can only track them today. Can't track them tonight. Can't track on the weekend. And I do have two different no-kill cat rescues that will take them. So, if a cat gets a home, well, we've got to do it the right way.
We have to capture them ourselves, then.
We've got to do it the right way.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Do we have any other public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am. Would you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Andrea Kakmar. I live on Clarendon Avenue. And I also would like to bring to council's attention problems with county hauling. Don't know if anyone did their due diligence before hiring county hauling as the city's refuse pickup department. But they have an F rating, and have had an F rating, Better Business Bureau, at least since 2018. They've had multiple complaints, not only from citizens of Union Town, but also from other municipalities where they pick up their garbage. Just in the past ninety days, because apparently that's as far back as customer service can go back into your record, I called yesterday to ask how many times I personally complain. They won't tell you how many times other people complain. But personally, in the last ninety days, I've had to call them four times to complain about either missed garbage pickup or missed recycling. Tuesday was my recycling day. Last Tuesday, I called Tuesday evening because my recycling wasn't picked up. I called again Wednesday because it was still sitting on the corner. I called Thursday, and I called Friday. Finally, Saturday morning, someone came to pick it up. And I'd like to say this is the first time that's happened, but it's not. This is an ongoing thing. If we're being charged for pickup of recycling, then it should be picked up. I mean, you wouldn't hire someone to paint your house if they're not going to come and paint, would you? I mean, why is the city saddling the residents of Union Town with a company that is not doing their job? I would never, ever hire an F-rated Better Business Bureau company to work for me. But somehow, that slid by everybody's attention, and we hired them to pick up the garbage. North Huntington recently canceled their contract with county hauling because of all the complaints. I don't know how many complaints. The first reaction is, not to call City Hall when your garbage is missed, or your recycling is missed, your first reaction is to call county hauling, which is unsure what a lot of people have done, which maybe you have heard. Maybe you've talked to people who have had complaints. But if you haven't, it's because you're not the first line of action that someone takes. They're going to call county hauling to try to get it resolved. I've had garbage that was missed, that sat out in my alley for three, four days before somebody came and picked it up. I personally witnessed garbage trucks pick up a recycling can and haul it in the garbage, because in some areas, Wednesday is a garbage pickup day, but it's also the recycling day. So if you separate, go through the trouble of recycling, or separating your garbage from your recycling, only to have the garbage truck come and keep it all in the same truck, how is that serving any purpose? So, I just wanted to make my feelings known, and I know I'm not the only one, but I also want you to know that most people aren't going to pick up the phone and call City Hall when their garbage is missed. They're going to call county hauling. I don't know what authority you have. Maybe you can call county hauling and find out how many complaints they've gotten from the citizens of Union Town. I know I can call, and they can tell me how many times I call.
Thank you. Your time is up, but thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If I could make a comment and suggestion to this last comment. Ms. Kakmar?
Yes.
I did want to point out that if you do have difficulty and you can't get a result, please feel free to call City Hall, because we do get calls. And it seems like when we do have a contact, we have several contacts with county hauling, and one is for the route pickups and whatnot, and an email. And they seem to be very responsive whenever we're able to email them a complaint. So if you've tried, and you have a guideline, please feel free to call, and we'll get in touch with them for you.
Oh, you know, we are prepared.
That's fine.
Mr. Witt?
Yeah, and just a little bit of background on that. So as you guys may recall, when the city put out that contract, it's required to solicit bids, and it's required to go with the lowest responsible bidder. So we are saddled with that requirement, that we have to choose the lowest responsible bidder. We did do our due diligence on both of the two companies. We only received two bids, as you might recall, for that garbage contract. And both of those companies, we identified concerns, service concerns and whatnot, for both of those companies that submitted proposals. One of the proposals, though, was at substantially lower of a cost for the residents, which is why ultimately, because of the requirement to go with the lowest bidder, which is in the statute of the Third Class City Code, that's why, you know, ultimately, city council had to go with that hauler, as opposed to the other hauler that was selected. So just wanted to provide that background as well. We certainly hear you, and we're certainly aware of those issues, especially that other communities have had as well. But ultimately, that's why council had approved that contract, because it had to, because of the statute.
Well, perhaps you should put more emphasis on responsible rather than low-level.
And that's why, like I said, we did the due diligence to review both of the bidders. And there were concerns with both of the bidders, and customer service complaints that had come with both of these. So it kind of left the council in a difficult position of selecting one that everybody would be happy with, and fulfilling the lowest responsible bidder requirement.
But the other bidder, Tim, not to interrupt, but didn't you say that they sold out to the company that owns county hauling anyway? So we would have ended up with them anyway?
Yeah, that's correct. So both of the companies that submitted bids are now the same company. So we...
How long's the contract for?
Three years.
Three years, three years.
We will contact them tomorrow and let them know that we received two complaints publicly at this meeting tonight.
We'll email them.
We will.
In the morning.
Both of you. Yes, sir.
I have a question about that. If they're not fulfilling their contract, can you just cancel the contract?
So if there's a breach of the contract, it's possible to do that. The difficulty becomes who provides that service in the interim. And I've worked in some municipalities where they've done that, and obviously, North Huntington had taken that step. The problem is, once again, the last two companies, the last time we bid it out, we only received two bids. And both of those bids came from what are now the same company. So, you know, the concern would be, would we get any bids at all to provide service? And if we don't, who would provide garbage service in the city? And two, assuming we were able to find somebody, what would that mean with respect to the cost? And I understand, you want to make sure, you know, you get good service, especially when you're paying for it. But there are a lot of folks within the city that are on fixed incomes, lower incomes, and that does present, you know, a lot of a concern for them as well, if there would be a significant increase in the cost, unfortunately. So those are all things that, you know, we have to consider. And certainly, like council said, they'll be following up with county hauling to let them know that those two complaints were addressed this evening, along with some of the other ones that we've received at City Hall periodically, to hopefully get those corrected and remediated.
But if not, but if not, it might come to that point where we might end up getting rid of them because of breach of contract. So if it, but we will definitely talk to them tomorrow.
And that's why I encourage as many people come to these meetings, if we don't hear from the public, we don't know. So this is very helpful, and we're not just going to tell you that we're going to call and find out, just because we're going to figure out what's going on. So we'll do our best to try to give a resolution to this, because I can see that'd be frustrating, yes.
Yeah, it's very frustrating. And I talk to them every month. Call us, get it picked up. And those two were very nice. I had a supervisor one time, and she was very rude.
Well, we're going to get contact with them.
Very good. Any other public comment this evening?
I just want to say one thing, real quick. I went down by five corners last week. Somebody untied the American flag in the POW flag, it was laying on the ground. So I put it back up. I was hoping the cable could catch it. I can't say I did, but I put it back up. I knew, because I put it back up the first time, and you put the new ones up, and I tied it off good. I knew it was completely untied. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Larry. Thanks for keeping an eye on that, too. Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment this evening? If not, Ms. Marshall?
It was resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town. The council adjourned to meet Thursday, September 2nd, 2021, at 4:30 p.m. Mr. Saki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Thank you all for coming.